...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its name.
First on the agenda, we have a consideration of administration of the oath of office for the 7th District Council seat. At the August 16th, 2016 council meeting, Erin Paniac was appointed to fill the unexpired term, the 7th District Council seat. At this time, Deputy Clerk Mary Bachman will administer the oath of office for the term expiring November 2016.
Mr. Dean, Rachel Royton, and my senior attorney. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of this state
the Constitution of this state
and that I will faithfully perform the duties
I will faithfully perform the duties
of the Office of City Council
of the Office of City Council
for the city of Manskey
for the city of Manskey
state of Michigan
state of Michigan
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
I also certify
I also certify
that I have not violated
that I have not violated
any of the provisions
any of the provisions
governing municipal elections
governing municipal elections
and the state of Michigan
the state of Michigan
as provided in section 13-14
as provided in section 13-14
of the charter
of the charter
of the city of Manskey, Michigan
of the city of Manskey, Michigan.
Thank you. Will you please call the roll?
Mayor Kenny.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Here.
Councilmember Goodsky.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Here.
Councilmember Paniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Public safety director.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
All set, ma'am.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments and agenda-related items. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda concerned by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, notification regarding next work session, consideration of MNC High School homecoming parade, and consideration of MNC Catholic Central Homecoming Parade.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Zalinski, supported by Councilmember Goodsky, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion?
Chief, with the homecoming parade, are we going to close the road prior and clear traffic, or is that just going to occur?
We don't close river treatment, other than just one break. They're about 10 minutes long. We just hold back for a few minutes and run through them.
Okay, thank you.
Any concerns or questions? Will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Paniac.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business, new business. Consideration of introducing ordinance 16-01, amending chapter 663 fireworks. At the work session of August 9, 2016, council revisited the discussion on the fireworks ordinance. Following that discussion, city council directed the city attorney to develop an ordinance mirroring state law, with council approval for display requests such as slave valve festivals, school events, et cetera. As this ordinance amendment was a discussion by the entire council, this amendment was not taken to the council ordinance committee. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Zalinski, supported by Councilmember Whitlow, to approve the ordinance 16-01. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodsky.
No.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Paniac.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Thank you. Consideration of addendum to the Charter Township Water Sewer Agreement. At the January 19, 2016, regular meeting, city council took action to enter into an agreement with Charter Township of Tyler for the collection and treatment of wastewater. The Charter Township of Tyler has requested addendum to address sewer mains located in Tyler Township owned by the city. The attached addendum addresses their concerns by stipulating that the city will give Tyler Township certain city-owned infrastructure located in Tyler Township and that the infrastructure given to Tyler Township will become part of their wastewater collection system. Is there a motion to approve the addendum?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Smith, supported by Councilmember Zalinski, to approve the addendum. Is there any further discussion?
Can we have staff run through that, please? Just for...
It's pretty simple. They feel that they need to own any of the components that we may have of the wastewater collection system that's in the township so they can do a special assessment of this district. Our attorney disagrees, and it's really moot point because we own nothing. And they're aware that we don't own anything. But at least it's in writing that, in essence, what we don't have, they can have. So it's just to satisfy their perceived need for this document so they can do a special assessment of this district. But we've told them that we own nothing out there, because all of their connections are through what I would term very well, the adules, into the connection point into the city, and those are private. So that's the bottom line. Thank you.
Any other? Any other concerns or questions? Seeing none, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Goodsky.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlow.
Yes.
Councilmember Paniac.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmembers Zalinski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to notices, communication, and announcements. Rather part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we'll hear from Ms. Pat Sagala, who will report on the activities of the tree commission.
Good evening. There was a member of the tree commission that was going to give a report. Kathy tried to contact her, wasn't able to, so we may have to delay that one.
Oh, okay. So you just want to move right on to the public works?
If you don't mind.
All right.
We did something similar last year. In the city of Manskey, the public works is made up of five general areas: utility, including water sewer, fleet maintenance, the parks department, refus, as well as the street department. The structure is, we have a director, a deputy director. Kathy Boyle is our administrative assistant. We have 10 full-time employees in the street department and five part-time. That includes two summer help that we hired to help us, and then three part-time bridge tenders. In the parks department, we have two full-time employees, and we hire six summer employees. And then in the utility departments, all three of those departments, there's eight full-time employees. We did a little sampling last week, just to see how many phone calls Kathy handles on a daily basis. And over the couple days that we checked it, she fields over 200 phone calls and drop-ins at the office. So we have a lot of inquiries, a lot of questions, and she does a great job directing those. We also handle large capital projects and construction projects. This year, that included the Sixth Avenue Sewer Project and the Riverbank, or Sixth Avenue Pump Station, along with Riverbank Sewer, the Riverwalk repairs, three paving contracts this year, the return activated sledge pump replacements at the treatment plant, as well as working with our engineers on the saw ground. We manage over 11 budgets overall. We do a lot of, or do extensive Department of Transportation and Department of Environmental Quality Reporting. We handle a lot of purchasing and planning. And this year, just a personal note, I graduated from the Michigan Public Service Institute. In the street department, we're responsible for all winter maintenance activities, general road maintenance, which includes street sweeping, crack sealing, striping. We handle the sidewalk replacements and repairs, as well as winter maintenance on those. Our forestry work includes cutting and removing, trimming trees within the boulevards and within the parks. This year, we've taken out about 60 trees already. All of those are reviewed and approved by the parks, or the tree commission prior to our doing work. We also pick up brush on a weekly basis. Normally, those are Friday. We'll extend it a day earlier, a day later if there's a large amount. We operate, we have several contracts with the Department of Transportation, including maintenance of US 31 within the city limits, as well as operating the Memorial Bridge, May through October. A few of the highlights this year: council assisted us in purchasing the Wacker Newsen, which is a small loader. We purchased it for about six different reasons, and within the first few months, we probably added 20 different capabilities that we found made our operations more efficient and safer for our guys. It's been just a wonderful machine. We've actually been in contact with some of the, with the manufacturer of the attachments. There's hundreds of different attachments that you can get for these type of machines, and we're working on a deal where they would use the public works to do demonstrations on some of their equipment, give feedback. They've been very impressed with how our guys utilize the equipment and have the knowledge to. We had three new hires this year. We've had three retirements and have replaced those positions. We know that, at least in the upcoming year, we have probably at least two more retirees that are planned. So we've been going through a lot of turnover and training. We have two new plow trucks that are, should be delivered within the next week or two. A couple weeks ago, we went up to the equipment manufacturer, and one of the trucks was ready to go into the paint shop, which is the last step. The other one, which is our new salter, was just getting the salt box and finishing the hydraulics on them. So those will be new, great new assets to our fleet. Our sidewalk program, we've taken that back in-house and have tried to put together a little more robust program. Last year, we contracted with a new technology, which is concrete saw cutting. Basically, what they do is trim the edges of sidewalks that have heaved and eliminate hazards. We did the majority of the north side with that and cleared over 250 trip hazards. Last fall, and then throughout this year, our crews have been going out and removing slabs that weren't candidates for that trip hazard cutting, and we've been removing panels and replacing those as necessary. We probably have about 12 more of those sections that we'd like to do on the north side, and then our intention is to then systematically move through the city and try to make a complete revolution through the city. We do have reports that come in of excessive trip hazards, and when they're over two inches, we need to address those per our insurance carrier. So we'll spot those around town as we become aware of them, but we're trying to stay geographically in one area and just keep moving around. In the fleet maintenance, we maintain and repair over 55 vehicles, not just in the public works, but we also assist with some of the vehicles that are here at City Hall and in the police and fire department. We assist in the motor pool scheduling and financing and projecting out costs, expenditures, and future capital needs. And then this year, we also hired a new mechanic. I'll talk a little bit more about that, but we had a retirement in our park system, which was our lead person. Our mechanic moved into that lead position, and so we hired a new mechanic. He's been doing a wonderful job reorganizing things, coming up with some fresh new ideas, and so I think the efficiency in that department has increased, and we'll keep moving forward in a positive manner. In the parks department, we maintain 18 city parks spread throughout the community. It includes all the daily maintenance and repairs, mowing, taking care of vandalism. We clean the restrooms on a daily basis, including on the weekends. We plan out upgrades. Beach cleaning this year, we stepped up the beach cleaning a little bit. We were having quite a bit of reports that it was dirty, if you will, but most of that is from the debris and stuff that's washing up on shore, and I'll show a slide of that in a minute. On the left is a picture of the Earthershake Boulevard. If you recall, this spring, we installed a pay tube there, so the parks department has been monitoring that. It seems to be going quite well. The police have been enforcing the parking rules there, and so this is really, will be the busiest season for that as the sand starts running and that launch gets used quite a bit. We also teamed up with a lot of community partners and volunteers to open up, reopen up Lighthouse Park, which is a picture on your right. The picture really doesn't do it justice, but the day after the fireworks, the beaches are absolutely trashed. You've probably seen pictures of Traverse City and some of the other beaches, garbage everywhere. We have the same thing. We have a crew, a full crew, that comes in at 4 o'clock in the morning. They pick up all the large debris, fill in all the holes with heavy equipment, and then by the time everybody else is woke up and headed to the beach, you'll see the picture on the right, those beaches are pristine condition again. We renovated one of the pavilions down at First Street Beach. It just was in need of some tender loving care. We replaced a lot of lumber, repainted, and put that back into good shape. I mentioned that we have a new lead man in the parks. The grass on the beach is really comes from examples like, are in the picture on the left-hand side. The water levels are so high this year, and it started last year, that as it's lapping along the shoreline, a lot of that sand is drunk back into Lake Michigan, which doesn't cause any harm, but the vegetation that comes back in with it flows in Lake Michigan. We even see it coming down the rivers. And then depending on the way the wind is blowing, we can clean the beach today. The wind can shift directions, and within a couple hours, it pulls a lot of that debris back up on the shoreline. So we've been able to more effectively clean, more efficiently clean the beaches with one of the attachments that our new loader has, but that's just an ongoing challenge for us. I mentioned the renovations that were completed at Lighthouse Park. This year, we added two fire pits to each of the two beaches. We haven't had any huge issues with those, that I'm aware of. The public has been very positive, been reacting to those, and we see people using them all the time. The Fifth Avenue Beach improvements, we're getting very near the end of that. Today, we poured two pads for the two smaller shade structures. The structures just came in about two weeks ago, so we were really hoping that they would be in in June and we would have those up before the holidays, but we'll be pouring, we're planning on pouring the large 20 by 40 pad on Friday, weather depending, and then we're scheduling to have the actual canopies and the framework installed after that. As you're aware, additional erosion concerns were behind the Riverside Motel, so we assisted in managing the repair of those, and we're able to complete those before the holiday. One of the areas that we contract in the, in the parks department is the mowing and maintenance of the city marina grounds. We wanted, we looked at that this year to see if we could bring that back in-house. With a new lead person, we decided to just let a whole summer go as normal, and we'll be looking at that over the winter time to see if we can bring it in with our existing staff, or if there's a cost benefit to bringing it in the house and possibly hiring another summer staff, so... And then we support multiple festivals. Last time I counted, we had 18 different events that we supported, bringing out fencing, picnic tables, garbage cans, and so forth. This year, we've actually been tracking the cost of those, so when we get through a cycle, I'll be able to come back with a report that tells you how much time and equipment and materials that we use to support each of those festivals. In the refus contract, the first thing is the household hazardous waste. We've had some, several meetings with representatives from Republic, and as you're probably aware, just a couple weeks ago, the county had a countywide hazardous waste pickup. It's really a duplication of what the city offers in the spring. So Republic has some ideas on how we can change how the city provides it and possibly change the day and, without increasing expense, provide a whole different, larger benefit to the citizens. So as we talk through that further, we'll be coming back to council with that. We maintain the recycling center, as you're aware. We moved that out of the public works yard and moved it to a new site located off of North Bolshesky. The, when it was in the, the public works yard, almost on a daily basis, we'd have to pick up trash and debris, haul those to the dumpsters. When we moved it over to the new site, we still had some of that abuse with trash and so forth, but it reduced down to about once, maybe twice a week. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. We also pick up yard waste, spring through fall. Every Tuesday, we go citywide and pick up our leaf bags. With the closing of Olson's, Ward Hardware has agreed to sell those bags, so you can pick up the bags or purchase those at either Ward Hardware or here at City Hall. On the right-hand side are three bins that we created. The bin on the left is for those yard waste bags. If you're not interested or not willing to wait till Tuesday when we come pick those up, the citizens are welcome to bring them down here on their own, put them in the, in the bin, and then we will pick those up and haul them out to the compost. The bin that's in the center is for brush. Same thing, if you're not, if you're not interested in waiting till Friday or just want to haul it over here yourself, those bins are sized so that we can efficiently load them in the trucks and take care of them. The bin on the right, we intend to use for compost or topsoil. We have not screened our topsoil for three years. Our topsoil, we changed the way that we were composting it, returning it less often, we're letting it cook longer, if you will. That helps to not only break down the organics, but the heat reduces the weed seeds and helps to kill those off. So we're in the process of taking prices. Once we get that topsoil screened, we intend to keep that bin filled up, and if citizens want to use that to pot flowers or supplement their garden, they're welcome to use that at no cost. We've kind of designed it so that a contractor can't come and take a big scoop out of it. It's kind of load your own as you go. This is a picture of some of the challenges that we have with illegal dumping at the refus center, at the recycling center. Once we put up some of the new signage, signage, about three weeks ago, we have found that even that illegal dumping has gone down. It still occurs. Councilman Whitlow pointed out today that there was some debris that was shoved in a dumpster, so tomorrow, we'll be reviewing the videotapes and trying to find out who did that, and we'll take the appropriate action to correct it. I won't spend any time on the utilities. We did a separate presentation on that a couple weeks ago, both the water sewer and the collection system. One thing that we've been doing the last couple years is exploring ways to stretch our dollars, our budget dollars, further. And so there were a lot of instances where we contracted out services, and we've been looking for opportunities to bring those back in-house, and some of these are, have been very successful, some of them have not. The yard waste bag pickup, for instance, we paid Republic to pick up half of the yard waste bags in the city, and then our staff picked up the other half. When we analyzed the cost of that, we ended up hiring two summer employees, and those summer employees pick up those bags every Tuesday, just like our contractor would, but we get to use them for four days, the other four days out of the week, and that overall program saved close to $6,000. So there was a win-win-win all the way around. I talked about sidewalks. We feel that we're getting more coverage in our sidewalk replacement program, and we're more effective using the budgeted money with our own staff than when we were contracting out, and we're getting better at it. Stump grinding, I've talked about this before. When we purchased the stump grinders, we used to contract out stumps, about $5,000 a year. Contractor would come in for several days, one time a year, grind all our stumps. Now we've got the capability. The first stump grinder we bought was about $5,500, and we were able to complete all the stump grinding ourselves in-house. When we bought the Wacker Newsen, we actually upgraded that, and we've got greater capacity and more efficiency, and so that's working really well. Irrigation is a huge savings at this point, but our staff are capable of doing line repairs, head replacements, and stuff like that. So the things that we can handle, we're doing them in-house as opposed to just calling contractors. When it gets into the controls and stuff, then it gets a little more complex, and we will contract that out. We also do the startup and the shutdown, blowing out of the systems. The water department started blowing out the irrigation in the parks today. We're at that point in the time where we're shutting down our irrigation, so we've saved money that way. Insurance claims, whenever there's an opportunity during an emergency situation where you can build back our services and our overtime, we've been working with the staff at City Hall to actually build the insurance companies for that and are replenishing some of those funds. One of the items that we looked at was prepping our patches. Throughout the year, we have all kinds of different utility dig jobs, and various sized patches are spread all over the city. Two years ago, we tried to actually excavate those and prep them ourselves, and what we found is that contractors are just more efficient at that, and it took up too much of our time, so we've kind of gone back away from that, and we bid it out as a prep and pave on those. Fertilizing seemed to make sense to everyone that we pay a lot of money to fertilize all of those 18 parks, and so we started looking at, can we fertilize it ourselves? Can we purchase the materials in bulk? And what we found out is that there's special certifications and training that are required, and the cost of those make it prohibitive for our staff to do it, so we're back to contracting that. I think I missed one thing. Another example with the concrete work is the picture on your right. That's the Rocket Park. We utilized about $10,000 of city funds for that project for the purchase of the concrete. While the labor was provided, we probably saved at least $10,000 to $15,000 on that particular project in constructing most of that ourselves. And the same example would follow with the shade structures at Fifth Avenue. We're able to spend the money that council budgeted on that and get more out of it by providing our own in-house work. So in summary, I think we've had a great year. The guys have done a great job. We're taking advantage of the opportunities to hire new staff, train new staff. We hosted Thad's famous barbecue chicken feast this May down at the public works. Thad was the next one coming up.
We have one later this month with the fire department.
The fire department, so I hope to see you guys there, and I will take any questions.
I want to thank you, Jeff, for you and your crew. You do a lot of work, and like I've always said, you guys are ghosts. Work is done, and everything goes, so thank you. Just one thing on the street sweeping. I believe we talked about this before, but is there a way that when, when there's street sweeping streets, excuse me, is rather than going all the way back to the garage and dumping, is there any way to circumvent that?
We had, we talked about that, and we looked at purchasing totes, and basically, you've got to dump that debris, and it can't be dumped out on the surface. It's got to go inside a dumpster or something. So we looked at and talked about spotting trucks around town. We've talked about purchasing totes to be able to do that, but in the end, what we found is that when, when the street sweeper has to dump its debris, it often has to take on water at the same time. And so there's two points in the city, three, three points in the city where we take on water. One would be the wastewater treatment plant, and that hasn't been set up for it, but it's an opportunity. And the other two places are at the city garage, or we put a new standpipe at Duffy Park, so we would have to have something both for containers and a water source, and so as it is, they both exist. both exist right at the garage.
A stump grinder. We have problems with our, is that the new stump grinder with malfunctioning?
Well, I'll try to make this not a long story. We had some issues. The machine, the whacker machine was overheating while we were using the stump grinder. And what we found is that the equipment vendor that we purchased it from had specified, the stump grinder that he recommended for us, he classified it as a high-flow attachment, meaning high-flow hydraulics. What we found out, we actually had a manufacturer come from the stump grinding unit, and what we found is that it was actually a higher-flow hydraulic, but it wasn't a high-flow hydraulic. And there are two different systems on that machine, a low-flow and a high-flow. So they set it up for us to operate under high-flow, which was cycling the hydraulic line or fluids too much, and it was overheating. To help repair that, they then sent us a different stump grinder that was high-flow, and in the end, we tried both ways. We were able to get the one that we purchased to work very well under the low-flow, but because we specified that we wanted a high-flow, they provided an upgrade to us, a much larger one that works more efficiently, and we've got that resolved now. They were just here last week. We took the biggest stump we could find up on Cedar Street, and we had the manufacturer run it as hard as he could, we ran it as hard as we could, and it seems to be working just fine now.
Did we keep the old system as backup, or did we dispose of that?
We traded, the original one we had was traded in, yes. So fingers crossed, but everything looks really well now.
How is the recycling bin program going for residents?
The curbside? Well, I know that Republic just replaced all the totes. They put out flyers to all the residents encouraging them to get in on the system. It's a voluntary participation. There's about 100 of those totes that are out there, but you pay additional money to be able to participate in that. Republic pushed really hard, to be honest with you, to switch the city over entirely to curbside recycling as a mandatory option. We talked about that, I believe it was last summer, and decided that the additional expense to every resident wasn't worth the mandatory aspect of it. And the reason why it costs more today is because with 100 stops, it's not very efficient for their truck and their crew to come up and get it, but if they had 3,000, 4,000 stops, then they can make it a cycle and be more cost-effective. And the council agreed that we would continue to look at that on an annual basis.
Jeff, I have a question about the topsoil.
Sure.
Can any of that be utilized, say, toward the future of Blossom Boulevard and some of those guts?
Yeah, absolutely. We use that compost, the topsoil, for all of our dig jobs, all our repair work that's in the boulevards, wherever we need it in the parks. We've replaced the topsoil along 31 for Blossom Boulevard. I think every two years, we would replace it. In fact, the new salt truck that we have actually has the spinning mechanism will allow us to load that truck and side discharge topsoil into, right into Blossom Boulevard more efficiently, so we can eliminate a piece of equipment for that. Absolutely. I think that we're making much higher quality, and I think that the volume that we have will be more that we'll be able to use with just city projects. That's why we'd like to make it available to residents, and then maybe there's other opportunities to market it.
I have a question about maintenance. When we hired the new person, and I believe you purchased software for maintenance records. How is that going?
We have not purchased the software. We had talked about purchasing diagnostic equipment and software, and that was approved in this budget. We decided to hold off on that, and I wanted Jeremy to get, really get ingrained into our entire fleet operation, and then I would like to go back to him and see if that particular stuff that we had looked at, he thought would be appropriate or beneficial. So we have not, we have not talked about that recently, but that will be coming up here in the next couple of months.
Are we maintaining any kind of records at all?
Yeah, he's implemented a written file system now, and so we've got maintenance sheets on each of the vehicles as they come in and out, and so we've started, we're much further ahead in our record-keeping as we are today than we were six months ago.
Just have one other question. I have people making comments about the street sweeping, especially downtown, and zigzagging and going around and making kind of sidebar comments about that. Can we explain anything about that? Why don't we do it earlier, or what is the issue there?
Well, we've had some internal conversations about that. Ernie tries to get the downtown Friday mornings so that everything's cleaned up for the weekend. Mondays, he'll come back and touch up if necessary. And what we find is that as our downtown is becoming successful and changing, we have to change and adopt as well, adapt as well. We went through the same thing, had the same conversation with council when the vote opened up, and we had to start plowing snow differently because there's so many cars down there, and they were open Saturdays and Sundays before we can have to worry about that, you know what I'm saying? So we've had some of those internal conversations. Ernie's been doing this a long time. He said that in the past, they tried to do it earlier in the morning, but what we find is, as the coffee shops are becoming more popular and successful, there's more cars downtown, but the other thing that's happening now is we're getting a lot more rental properties, and the hotels are busier, there's rental properties downtown, so that we haven't identified a good time to, where that street would be clear for us to do it 100% efficiently. Thad's asked Chief Bachman to kind of keep, have officers keep an eye. If there's a time at 5:00 in the morning or 4:00 in the morning, that would be better, but as it is, we have to go in and out of cars a little bit, but it really doesn't hamper that operation that much.
I'm not complaining, but they do an excellent job. First straight, bumped a little sand off the gutter, and there was no sand. I mean, they're doing a good job. It just seems like he's working really hard to get things done.
Well, and the importance of it is, just, first, it's the aesthetics of it. I mean, the streets look cleaner after he goes through, but even more important than that is, is the maintenance of the storm sewer system. Once that stuff washes down into the storm sewers, then it's a lot more difficult and expensive for us than cleaning out those catch basins, so it's really a preventative maintenance technique.
Can I give an update on Morton Park?
Morton Park. There are, we have a, we have a, in writing now, we have a three-year pledge from Morton Salt. They pledge money on an annual basis over three years to help the city improve, make improvements to that park. The Parks Commission has had a subcommittee that's been working on it, probably almost a year now, and so we've got a comprehensive plan put together. We were, I don't know, in depth, if you'll let me get on that, but we were prepared to come to council and start a phase plan, phase one, two, and three, and the Parks Commission wanted to seek out grant money to match the Morton money to help purchase some additional fencing, some parking, picnic tables, grills, and then, most importantly, the new playground equipment. We've been having a lot of meetings recently, and we intend to give an update to council in two weeks, right, on the 20th, on our CSO discussions, and where we're at with the sewer, we're in the process of negotiating our new NPDS permit, and so that might have some implications on that park based on the available land and the adjacency to our interceptor sewers. So we're kind of holding them at the moment while we go through some engineering evaluations, but once we get further into that, we'll be able to know. So I don't think it's, it's certainly not a dead issue, it's just delayed a little bit more.
Any other questions? Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to Concerns and Comments. Citizens in comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment in municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Anyone who'd like to comment. Yes, sir, please come forward and state your name and address, please.
My name is Dennis Skerrill, and although I do not live in the city, I have several properties in the city, and I've appeared before the council before. If I may approach the council, I have some pictures that you can kind of look over while I'm talking. I have, I took these last Wednesday. Took me about a half an hour. All of those, except for the Century Terrace, are east of 31, mainly in Maxwelltown. There's approximately 23 sites. As I said, half an hour with a camera, and basically what we have going on in the council, I don't know if is we're not, but you certainly have a cancer developing within the city. The top picture you have there is Century Terrace, and anybody that stops at the corner of Sixth Avenue and Daniel Street on any given afternoon could get high as a kite if you spent too long at that stop sign. I don't know what's going on there. I understand there's been a change in the, not only the procedure, but who is allowed to occupy that property, but certainly it's become, at the very least, a drug haven. My complaint, my personal complaint is with an officer, Ben Sickel gave me this number, complaint number 856. That was the second set of pictures you have in your portfolio. 127 Simmons Street. This is an ongoing, absolute pigsty that I have to put up with on a yearly basis. We've had everything from drug dealing out the front door. We've had people sleeping in tents in the backyard. Back when Mark Neeson was the building inspector, he ousted that crew. I've spoken with the chief with regard to this property. They finally put a front door on it. A couple of weeks ago, we had a blow-up over there. They're dragging in garbage from Potter Road in Bear Lake, dumping it on, anywhere from Monday evening to Tuesday evening in big bags, raw garbage, and of course, then the animals pick it up and drag it to my property next door. Again, this happened, the reason I took my little light drive last Wednesday was because it's starting all over again. Raw garbage left on the outside of the property, raw garbage going up the staircase, and again, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, there is no light officer anymore. There is no, Mark Neeson has since retired, and I don't believe there's a city building inspector. There is no teeth in the ordinance whatsoever, so these people that continue to violate and pick up our city get away with it, and I'll ask the chief again, can't we issue tickets? Isn't there a simpler way perhaps to put an ad or some type of a notice in the news advocate in the early spring, let's say April 1st perhaps, that if you violate these ordinances, you will be ticketed and you will be fined? And if you don't pay them, they'll put them on the taxes. There are certain items that go on the tax row right now if you fail to do it, so I really think it's time for the council perhaps to get on one of these dial-a-ride buses and take a drive through the city, and I'll be happy to point these areas out. I own properties, rental properties for over 40 years, and quite honestly, I'm just sick of it. I can't, I can't get any response from anybody. If I approach the people that are doing it, then they want to sign a complaint for harassment, assault, you name it, ask the chief. We've been down that path. So now what I do is I call central dispatch, and it's just an ongoing merry-go-round. So, and certainly, like you say, the Century Terrace is a problem. You've got some properties on River Street, we didn't even address that, and I didn't drive down there, but God, how would anybody in their right mind that wanted to set up a business after they've once visited this town and seen this garbage and this, it looks like Tobacco Road? There is absolutely something that needs to be done, and we have a real problem. I understand from the...
Mr. Skerrill, you have 30 seconds. Your five minutes is almost up.
Thank you. I always do get just five minutes, of course, but I noticed there's a work session, and I certainly will be happy to attend that and at least contribute the best I can. I will like those pictures back because I plan to put those in a chronological order, and I will put the addresses and so forth of the properties on there, so if the council decides to take a little light tour yourself...
Thank you.
...you'll be able to follow those. Thank you.
So anyone else who'd like to comment? Listening to that, we'll move on to officials in staff. Deputy Director.
Your Honor.
City Attorney.
Deputy Director.
Public Safety Director.
Deputy Director, thank you.
City Engineer.
No.
Public, or DPW.
Deputy Director.
Councilmember Beaton.
Welcome here. It's nice to see another person on council, and you are enjoying it so far, so, welcome.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Welcome, Erin. Also, did I hear Jeff McCool, Mr. McCool, was talking about, we're going to have an update on the CSO?
We're looking at the next council meeting this month, we've got an update.
Thank you.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Welcome, Erin, and happy birthday.
Well, thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Welcome, Erin, and he correctly made the happy birthday, Rob.
Welcome, Erin. Happy birthday, by the way. And I...
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yeah, I want to say happy birthday to Robber. And I did see in the paper that our planning commission got an award from the NCO extension. It was the citizen planning forum, and I just wanted to congratulate the State Department for their hard work and hold up.
Welcome. Councilmember Pontiac. And next, we'll move on to a consideration of a closed session regarding the city attorney opinion. City council has received a written opinion from the city attorney. The city attorney has recommended that council consider discussing the written attorney opinion, but it goes out from disclosure under the Michigan Freedom of Information Act. It's involving material covered by the attorney-client privilege in closed session pursuant to Section 8A of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Is there a motion to proceed into closed session?
Oh, I guess so.
I have a motion by Councilmember Goodspeed, supported by Councilmember Zalinski, to proceed into closed session. Will you please take the roll? Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Mayor Kenny.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Goodspeed.
Yes.
Thank you.